Is it on now? Yeah. Okay. Can you hear me? Did you guys hear me out there? Again, just in case, welcome to today's work town council workshop of May fifteenth, two thousand and twenty-three. Mr. Clark, if you could please take the role.
Councilmember Ramirez.
Here.
Councilmember Lord.
Here.
Councilmember Duncan.
Here.
Vice Mayor Callahan.
Here.
Mayor Mayor Bond.
President.
We have a corner.
If you'd all please join me and rise for the pleasure of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, guys, so welcome to our town council workshop. Again, you know, this is just the next step in our process of of this legacy park. This journey began a long time ago. So you look back, now we've had over twenty-three public involvement meetings. We've received over nine hundred comments. And along the way, we can continue to work with both the public and and our design team on some of the requirements or our dreams and wishes or hopes what we'd like to have here. All the council members have met individually. Our design team to kind of share our ideas on little tweaks and and things that we'd like to see. And so they've made some of those changes. They're going to bring them forward and present them to us tonight, and we as a group will have the opportunity to kind of discuss it. And see if we can fine tune our vision collectively any further. I'd also like to remind everybody, or to remind everybody at the end again. That on Saturday, May twentieth, we're going to have a Wings Over the Bay celebration over at Cutler Ridge Park. And we're going to have this out there for the public to again to to kind of view and again make additional comments. As we get closer and closer to a design. So with that, Ralph, is there anything you'd like to add, or do you want to?
No, I think Mayor also, we just scheduled the second public involvement meeting in case folks can't attend on Saturday, May twentieth. It's going to be Thursday, May twenty-fifth at Town Hall from six P M. to eight. P M. And we'll be pushing that information out through our social media outlets. So it's going to be a second opportunity. We just finalized it today with our design teams.
So I get to do another video?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Great. Okay. All right, with that, Ralph, would you like to introduce the team?
Okay, thank you. And as Mayor, as you mentioned, we have tonight Charles Michelson from the our salts team, as I call him, that is going to introduce his team and and perform the interactive discussion with the town council. So Charles.
Thank you. And good evening. My name is Charles Michelson, principal with Salts Michelson Architects. And tonight we have us members of all the design team here in person to be able to hear your comments and basically interact with you. Salts Michelson Architect Design Team. We have Michael Graves Design Team, and we have E D S A here in the audience. And again, we start out by thanking you again. We appreciate the opportunity of working on this project. We're ecstatic about the amount of information you provided us through your twenty-three meetings. We're up to two. But your twenty-three previous meetings with regards to the information provided by the public. There was consistency and wonderful meetings that we had with you individually and a really clear and concise vision of what everybody here sees for the park. And as I indicated to all of you at the time, this is a series of refinements. We're starting out with the master plan. And then we certainly continuously evolve into the details. Simultaneously, we've met with the city, the town, and the town departments to understand the requirements of the individual buildings as we go through that. But tonight, what I want to do is go through the process of where we are with the master plan, how we started, and where we stand today. So if we have can put up the slide show. This is the plan that we started with at our presentation. Taking the analysis and consistency of all the comments from this from the town members themselves, we were able to develop a plan that really reflected the wants and desires of the community. Originally, if you take a look, this project had the police department into the park side of the site and the community center down to the street. It also did not contain a parking garage. It had parking on grade. But the master plan and the idea of the park stayed consistent with the evolution. So while there was agreement conceptually with regards to what this project and park represented, this design represented. There were comments that we elicited from you during our meetings that brought us to the next stage of the park evolution. This was the first generation of the park project. This is not the final one that we have after five days work versus two days work. But we wanted again, go through the process. Some of the initial comments and feedbacks we received was to swap places between the community center and the police department location. That the police and the town hall would work better in conjunction with each other. And that the community center would work better in conjunction with the park. So what we did is we realigned those buildings on the site to take a look at that relationship. And now we have the ability to compare one plan versus the other. Additionally, this plan for the first time includes a parking garage, a three level parking garage that opens up the site a little bit and is centrally located. So again, the different buildings on the site can the parking structure. Additionally, the parking structure again provides you with the parking you need for special events on the site. Some of the additional feedback that we have received starts to be demonstrated with regards to the design of the water features and the educational paths and the open fields and the interact connectivity to the shopping center, to the public center, to the top of the screen, and then ultimately to the out parcel to the left side of the screen. And starting to take a look at the entrance to the site, Old Cutler Road and the presentation of what that starts to look at. Now, as this plan developed and we met and talked to some people, we started to get additional comments from the police department, let's say, making sure we have the ability to protect and secure the site. We would receive the comments about continuing the Vita cost that exists to the adjacent to the public site and make sure it was incorporated into the park site itself, the legacy park site. We wanted to make sure that we had parking adjacent to the town hall and the police department. So people coming in to do business had a place to park adjacent to the building, go in, take care of their business and leave while more than employees had access to the garage. We also took a look at some of the additional items with regards to the pool being adjacent to the community center and with regard to some of the features that were requested, places for food trucks, interactive fountains, et cetera. That started to define some of the spaces in the park. Now, the park, as you see, has a very beautiful organic feel to it. But as we had the meetings, there was a concern that maybe the fields were a little too open. Maybe even though this wasn't a sports park, that's people could start to play sports there. And since that wasn't really the intention, could we come back in and refine the park a little bit more to make sure that those quality spaces that represent the desires of the community and the town council were incorporated into the design. This is just to show you a little bit of our process, how we start to take a look at the circulation on the site to make sure we have those connectivity going to the adjacent spaces. So there are specific locations that open to the street. There are specific locations that open to the community that we have the ability to control and secure in the evenings, but also depending on the events, the cut off roads, provide access, make sure there's safe circulation going around the site. This is the next evolution of the master plan that was developed and drawn so beautifully by D S A. So the organic nature of the park itself is still there. But you start to see the twists and turn a little bit more landscaping. So it truly becomes a family type park. And nobody would mistake it for a place to play sports since this town already has sports park where those activities can occur. The water feature is a little bit more divine defined and connects down the wetlands going down and actually coming to the front of the site surrounding the police department building. If you take a look, the parking garage circulation has been better defined. We have access to the garage on two sides from the road to the rear of the out parcel to a circular driveway access where during the week when people are there, used for business, have easy access on two sides. But on the weekend, that can easily be cut off. And that space becomes a place for food trucks or a farmer's market or activities that then starts to bleed into the park itself. If you take a look adjacent to that, a little bit better defined, interactive fountain location that ties into the walkway. And again, the landscaping starts to show scale and the walkways, the ones with the different hatch lines, almost like a boardwalk type look starts to be that nature trail, that educational trail where trees and other elements of nature can have the signage and represent an informational tool and educational component of the park to the community. The Vitacost path continues from behind the public site, but again, by virtue of introducing it into the park itself. We didn't want it to be a straight line. We wanted to have that character to meander around in the park setting. We also, if you take a look closely at the, I think it's two road at the bottom, that was originally a four lane road adjacent to the park. At this point, we chose and we hope that we will not have to make it a four lane road that we can keep it for public transportation on two lanes and a two lane road, one in each direction, and then take that additional space. And if you look, there's a very informal golf path that ties from the street where it reduces from four lanes down to two, that a golf cart path will be created. They'll be able to go into the perimeter of the park in the next generation. And when we work at this at a little larger scale, you'll see how we'll be able to incorporate some golf cart parking on that part of the that part of the park as well. Introducing other areas, if you take a look at the legend and you'll have copies of this, and obviously it takes some time to digest, you're seeing it for the first time. We also have parallel parking along the side of the park adjacent to the public center. And that also becomes a second location for food trucks in the case of an event. So they're pulling off the road into fine space. They won't impact circulation. And therefore you have the ability for food trucks to occur on that side of the park. You have the ability for food trucks to occur on this traffic circle entering the parking garage to have events on that side of the park. And again, the design of the park starts to take on the components of all the different activities that occur. So during the business day, it responds to the buildings that are on the site. And on the weekends and the evenings, it becomes everything from a casual natural park to a park where you have events. We have the stage in the field with a beautiful backdrop of landscaping and the water feature that becomes informal stage for music or drop down a screen and it becomes a movie night component. As we have the site going back towards the community center and the parking garage, we have the site sloped. So there can be some tiered seating or there can be tiered landscaping where you can put out blankets and therefore have a better view. And then if I can show you real quick, as we start to study it, it shows a very nice three dimensional opportunity that exists at the park. So that we start to tear up adjacent to the parking garage and that would hide the first level of the garage, the people in the park. What's also nice, we going back, if you take a look at the pool location. And and by the way, I'll speak to the pool in a moment, but the pool and the pool deck, we see that at the higher level. So it's overlooking the park as well. One of the benefits of that is I don't have to dig down into the water table to build your pool. It's actually starting at the grade of working up because we have a multi-story building in the community center, and we have certainly a three story, three level parking garage. So having that cool level elevated certainly gets it closer to the sun and some ventilation and adds acts as a beautiful backdrop to the park itself for the swimming activities or certainly in the night. I can see many activities that would occur in that beautiful setting. With regards to the pool, there's been different conversations about what activity should occur in the pool and what should the size of the pool be? Should it be a twenty-five yard pool with ten to twelve swimming lanes? Should it be a fifty yard pool? Which is basically nice, but it's twice the size and twice as expensive and everything that goes along with it. Are you going to play water polo in it, which is one height, one depth of what the pool is? Or if you're going to use it for swimming lessons, that's a different type of pool with different type of elevations. So when it comes to what pool we're going to be using and designing for this park, what you see there on the plan is the worst case scenario, the largest part of pool design, certainly if we go back to the twenty-five yard pool, which by the way, is consistent with the size of the pool that you have today. If we take the twenty-five yard pool and go a few lanes wider, there's a little added capacity than what you have today. But it's not two and a half times the size of what you have today. So that's one of those value judgments that needs to be discussed amongst all of you as you analyze the different components of the project. So again, we're excited about the design of the park, the organic nature of it, and then the field that's going to be created by virtue of the landscaping and trees, the water features, the walkways, the paths around, safe. We're excited to be able to talk to the different people at all of you with regards to making sure the park was accessible for large scale events, but very informal family gatherings. Put the child in the stroller and let's go for a walk. And we, I think we've hit the nail on the head with regards to that. With regards to the continuation of the road to the traffic circle, you start to see how we're designing the streets. So it all becomes one large drop off. Let me take that back, not a drop off area, but a designed area with regards to pavers and design into the ground so that people passing through the traffic, it acts as a calming device as opposed to it was an asphalt road. And at the same time, by virtue of that, it allows us to take advantage of the piece of property that's left over there, approximately an acre to become a small art park with a small water feature and a landmark that identifies legacy park to the community. We're also taking the legacy Cutler Bay Legacy Park signage that you saw on the original renderings and then putting them along that traffic circle on Cutler Bay. So it really gives you the most visibility of everybody that uses those roads. So that branding will be visible to everybody traveling in both directions along Cutler Bay. So we're very excited about the direction that this project's taking. It's kind of astonishing thinking we've only started about eight and a half days ago. But we're as excited about the feedback that we're getting and the enthusiasm of each and every one of you that we've met with going through this part of the project, including the staff members. I mean, the design, we keep pinching ourselves, waiting for us to wake up because this is really a dream. It doesn't work out like this in real life. But so far it has. And what it does, it gives us the ability to put our best foot forward to work consistently and thoroughly with regards to the project itself and this master plan. And simultaneously, we're through the programming process and we're going through our relationship diagrams and starting to get into the the buildings themselves. So I've spoken for a little bit now, and if there are any questions, certainly myself, members of the team are here to answer any specifics you might have. And I thank you for this brief introduction.
Well, thank you very much. You know, personally, I mean, I just it gets better and better each time we see it. I love how you put the water along the edge of two twelve street there was it's very nice touch. I also like the where you put the the parking garage, having the pool overlooking the park is great. Most important, I really like the way that you have the community center overlooking the the park. I remember I used to go to the the Keys Gate and their back building had a patio overlooking the golf course. And I'm like, wow, it's just a beautiful place. I don't know if the design of this building will have a patio for something like that, but it's just gives a potential for you to enjoy the park from different views. You can enjoy it from the ground. You can enjoy it from the the elevations or you can quite quite honestly, you can even enjoy it from the parking garage because it's right on the edge there. Again, the the interactive fountain, as you call it, you know, that's been the biggest hit at the zoo forever. It's because, you know, it's just people are walking around, gives you a chance to cool down real quick. So and so I really like the proximity of that to the park area where it's open to the public where they can use that. And it's just, again, this design gets it's better and better. I guess we're getting more and more excited. I also like the fact that you seem to have all the the traffic able to exit towards the old Cutler Road and towards the parking main towards the public's parking lot as well, where that's, you know, more commercial space, less residential space of keeping it away from the residents. So if I were a resident, I would love to be able to live next door to this. So there's some good and bad with it. But that certainly doesn't put more of a burden on the residents around there than than they should expect. So overall, I really like the changes, but of course, that's just my opinion. I'm one of five over here. It's obvious that there must have been some collective thought process from some of us because most of the things that I've mentioned have have appeared. So I'm assuming most of the things that you all have mentioned are here as well. But with that, I'll go ahead and open up to the rest of the court for comments. And B J, I'll let you go first.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. Thank you for for coming and the team for coming today and presenting this to us. I echo everything that the mayor just said. I think that a lot of everything that I had discussed and all the the items and different things that I've heard from residents and everything that they've kind of put in out there to the ether is included in this updated design. I really do love the the water feature, the water path, so to speak, along two twelve and and the actual walkway and pathway and just it had been really adds a certain natural element to this project. I love the the updated shape of the fields that that, you know, brings in a little more nature, a little more of a natural setting versus play areas, which we have plenty of parts that that already serve that purpose. I can't, I am excited to see where this design goes. Once you incorporate more public comments, more staff comments, I would love to see what eventually those the the water fountains and other features end up becoming. But I would absolutely say that I think you guys are really, you know, hitting the nail on the head with this.
Thank you. All right. Suzie?
Yep. Not to echo what they we've already said here. I really appreciate everything that you've updated on here. It's clear that you've been listening to us and by listening as you're also listening to the residents and that's very important. So thank you so much. I love where we're at. I know it's only going to get better as we go forward. I particularly love the Vita Trail and how that will bleed right into, you know, the neighborhood and whatever. It's it's cohesive. It's bringing everything together. So I love what you guys are doing so far. Thank you.
Thank you.
Vice Mayor.
I'll go last.
You'll go last? Okay. All right.
Thanks a lot.
Councilmember Ramirez.
First off, thank you. Thank you. Because it really seems that that this council was pretty much on, and you can agree or disagree, pretty much on the same page on how we wanted this to to look. And I'm looking at this right now. And in our conversation, this is exactly what I was looking at. This is exactly the the points that I had made and stuff. I'm really impressed with you moving the police station to town hall close together. I thought it was very important. The only the the real question I'm going to have is you mentioned pool size. Is there a kind of requirement to get the schools to come here to practice and have meets here and stuff like that? Is a twenty-five meter going to be too small for them to do that where the fifty meter does open up our community to to training and and meets and stuff like that? And I don't know the answer to that.
Yeah, and that's probably not the question for these guys. Again, when we had our workshop with the our pool experts, they gave us some recommendations.
Yeah.
We can go back and look at that. I think that was covered then. I don't remember what the exact answer was.
Yeah, I thought we had spoken about that at some point.
No, there's you can you can have regulation short course or regulation long course, right? The problem with our current pool is it's not regulated. It's too short. So the idea with the smaller pool is that it still meets the requirements for high school meets. And, you know, the longer course as well. So both the short course and the long course would meet that.
So then whole thing comes down the road. The good thing for you is that on two twelve, making it from a four lane to a two lanes already done for you in that area. So that saves a little bit of money trying to cover that up. But I'm I'm impressed with I looked at the first drawing again, first concept and this concept and you guys, you guys, you guys hit the nail on the head. And I thank you for listening to us and really kind of embracing what we were what we were trying to look at. You've done that. So thank you.
Right, Vice Mayor.
It's that guy's turn.
It's okay.
No, it's just like I told you, you know, in our meeting that I look at things from a different perspective. This is absolutely incredible. I don't think there's any any question as to the design and how you guys have captured that. I I could be wrong. I mean, I was wrong once in my life, but I could be wrong again.
I think you're mistaken.
Yeah, I was mistaken. I wasn't wrong. This this is not a thirty-seven million dollar project. Right?
That's correct.
As it sits here is possibly well over a fifty million dollar project, right? So one, I would want to caution you know, really getting you know, falling in love with all of this because we have thirty-seven million dollars, right? So we should be designing within like we talked about, right? We don't, one thing I would like to for the council to consider is is that we don't have to build sixteen acres because we have sixteen acres. Doesn't mean we have to build sixteen acres, right? I'd rather have an A plus design versus a B minus design because we're trying to build build sixteen acres. Were we on onboarding the because I think that's going to be a critical element.
Yeah, Vice Mayor, it's funny you ask that because we have Emma Jones, also the owner's rep is on the line as well. But I'm planning to take that before the town council on during our June meeting to have the issuance of the R F Q.
Okay.
The R F Q for the C M at risk.
Yeah, that's that's just, I mean, I think side by side with this needs to be some kind of cost estimate or something. So we can have a better idea of what we're looking at.
Absolutely. Understand, this has been the programming and master planning part of the project where we visualize what the project could look like in its entirety. And then put our arms around the individual components of the project with regards to the site and the building themselves. As we progress a little bit, yes, and we have something more tangible to look at, we will absolutely be looking at the budget. And then what happens, we take a look at those value judgments with regards to what are our opportunities to stay within the budget to provide you flexibility in the project with regards to does it specific design elements or phasing the project or expansion capabilities to do some now and then plan for it in the future. But what's most important is making sure the master plan meets all the requirements of today and the future. So however this project gets executed, it's first quality all the way through. If seventy-five percent gets done now and twenty-five in the future or a piece gets blocked out and becomes a future phase, you know that it was prepared and planned as part of one large cohesive project.
I certainly appreciate that. But I think in our communication, you know, we we should add that phasing catchphrase in there, right? I mean, it if this is eventually what it's going to look like, that's fantastic, right? But what I want to be very cautious with is giving our residents the idea that this is what it's going to look like opening day. It may not.
Correct.
Right? It may, it may be, you know, who knows eventually when we get get to this, that's the only thing. You know, I mean, there's a lot to consider, right? I mean, within that budgetary, I mean, F F and E could kill it. F F and E could easily be a couple million dollars.
And and Vice Mayor, if I can, if if I can, while we're talking about the cost, if I could have, if the if Mayor allows the clerk, if we could have Emma Jones chime in, our owners ref from Sand Tech, because we've had this conversation over and over again with Charles. That's why I see him there. But if we could just at least talk about the cost because I want to have at least Emma's perspective as well.
Without a doubt, and I think, you know, the Vice Mayor's caution is well heated, but we need that additional information. And Ralph, you've been upfront about that. I think with me and probably all the other councilmen is like, okay. You know, let's look at what design, what You know, let's look at what design, what we could be. And then we're going to figure out whether we can afford it or not, what we can't afford and when we can afford it. Those are the questions that need to be answered and having the contractor on board was, is a great idea. But without a doubt, please bring Emma on and talk about.
That's been a very important topic since day one and that's, that opinion's been shared with the council as well. Emma, I think if we could get Emma Jones on.
Yep, I'm on. Good evening, everyone. I just want to, you know, obviously echo everyone's statements. I've, I've been sort of sitting here pinching myself, looking at the visuals. I think that they have salt Michaelson has done an amazing job incorporating all of the comments of the meetings that I've sat through. With, you know, the police, obviously the town facilities, pool, everything. I think it's, you know, I'm, I'm very excited about, you know, seeing how well they have melded. Sort of the meetings that I've sat through as well as public commentary, I think it's incredible. The pricing comment, Vice Mayor, trust me, I'm, I'm definitely on your team on this. I look at the, the beautiful picture and I see the dollar signs as well. So, but I will say this, yes, we, you know, I. And Ralph has the RFQ for the CM at risk in, in his hands. And we've discussed it at length and the plan moving forward is from every single phase schematic design at the end of it, we will get a cost. Then we will look at all the parts and pieces, move to the next phase, design development. We will then cost at the end and make changes as necessary and then move forward. So we are very, very aware of doing a price check the entire way through. Because there's nothing worse than having this amazing picture in front of you and everybody gets their hopes up. And then it doesn't look like that. So no, we are absolutely going to do milestones, cost milestones the entire way through. And make sure that, you know, if, you know, if there are things that need to be on hold for a little bit, that's fine. But we will, you know, try, the goal is to get what is presented and agreed upon. And if we have to do some phasing to get that, okay, you know, we will discuss with everyone the best way to do that and, and what are the priorities. But obviously the budget is first and foremost. And yes, we are, we will have milestones of, of budget checks the entire way through.
Okay.
Thank you. Do you have any comments on the design or just?
No, the design's fantastic. I love it. The only thing that's missing is the statue of the mayor, but I'm pretty sure you have. It's not in the budget, apparently. No, it's fantastic. I really love.
Thank you.
Ralph, you recognize.
And I think, and I think, you know, members of council throughout our meetings with, with the Salt's team and, and with Emma. We kept using what you referred to, Mayor, is the 900 comments.
Yeah.
I mean, I think Charles has this memorized in his team, right? I mean, you know, what, what folks are expecting, you know, we take all, we don't take those comments very, you know, we take them very strongly because we had over 900 comments.
Yeah.
So we just want to make sure that folks, you know, our residents didn't get disenfranchised, right? And, and I mean, I guarantee you, you know, everybody on their team is kind of shaking their head. They, they memorize these, these charts, you know, and we'll have those available during our, our Saturday meeting as well, Mayor. So I think it's a, it's a great starting point and, and, you know, I'm just as excited as, as the mayor and councilors.
In fact, for our Saturday meeting, along with the boards that you see, we've actually taken those charts and put them on boards. So people can compare their comments side by side with the plans. Basically show that this community has been listened to with regards to the design of the park.
Great. All right.
And Mayor, also in the park portion as well, again, the, the, this area has been designated a brownfield. So once we, you know, solidify the master planning. Then as I've said before, then we'll start, you know, chasing the different types of grants that we have. And there's certain appropriations. So you're absolutely right, you know, Vice Mayor, we, the word phasing, it's not a bad thing. You know, you got to phase it in, right? I mean, and, and, you know, our goal's always been, you know, since the beginning with all 23 public meetings that. Once we develop the plan, then we can start going after different types of grants. We know that there's grants available for mitigation grants. We know it's going to be a command center. We know it's going to be three feet above, you know, female elevation is going to be the highest building, you know, along Old Cutler Road there. So the hardening of the building, the, the recreational features that are located within the brownfield, you know, that's grants in itself as well. And direct appropriations from, from the state as well. So once we, this has been the nucleus, right? Once we, we have this, then we can start chasing.
That's right. It becomes the tool you're able to use.
I share with you my favorite phasing story. This is a true story. When, when they built the brand new theater at FAU University, right? The, the gentleman that was in charge of the technical theater aspect of it was a sound engineer, right? So the, the board put him in charge of working with the architects and designing the theater. Well, of course, him being a, a sound engineer designed one of the most incredible sound design, even to this day. The FAU theater has one of the most incredible sound design systems anywhere in the United States. But the board of trustees came and said, listen, you're the budget, you're running over budget, you need to cut something. So he thought about it for a while and, and he made his decision. He cut the budget by almost quarter of a million dollars. So the theater was built, it's the grand opening. They brought the trustees in to see the wonderful theater. They brought them backstage, they showed them all the incredible systems backstage, the wonderful sound system. They said, all right, so they said, open the curtain. They opened the curtain and the trustees looked out and there were no seats. So he made a decision, a tactical decision. And the board of trustees looked at each other and said, we can't have a theater with no seats, this is impossible. They approved $250,000 to put seats in the theater.
Well, hopefully we won't have a story like that here.
Guarantee we won't have a story like that. We're, we're, I'm just saying.
We're going to be.
We try to value design instead of value engineering. Approach it from the beginning forward.
What does Stephen Covey always say, begin with the end in mind?
That's correct.
And that's what we've got right here. So we're, and we'll figure out ways to get as close to each step as we can. Again, we're not going to compromise quality, but we will make sure that this is a feasible project based on the economic restrictions we have. So we'll look for other trees to shake for additional dollars, ARPA or anywhere else and we'll continue to move forward. So anything else, Ralph?
No, I think, I think, Mayor, we have at least, you know, a good starting point, you know, and I think we're, we could gather some more, you know, public engagement, you know, from the two other meetings. And, and our, our intention is to, you know, solidify via resolution. Hopefully in our June meeting that we all agree on, I call it the campus design there. So that way we have that and then we could start, you know, with CM at risk and, and give, give Salt's, Michaelson's team, you know, the orders to start, you know.
Sounds like a good plan. All right, Council, thank you. Thank you very much for your presentation, presenting it. We look forward to seeing you on, on Saturday as well.
Right, thank you.
With that, this meeting is adjourned.